All right, let's start this regular meeting of the Council of the City of Ottawa, August 20th, 2024. Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor, we have five present.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut at the minutes of a regular meeting of the Council of the City of Ottawa, Illinois, held on Tuesday, August 6th, 2024, be approved as recorded in the permanent files of the city clerk.
I have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor.
Aye. Is there anyone wishing to appear before the council? Come up and state your name.
Good evening, I'm Liz Ferrero, and I want to thank you for your time tonight. I'd like to speak to you about revisiting the proposed ordinance covering short-term rentals. Okay, so I believe Bob Eschbach, he should have received an email, all of you, of a letter concerning this matter with specific reference to our situation, but I think it's applicable and important for the town as a whole. As Bob stated in his letter, "We have experienced a fair amount of disturbances from the property next door since it was purchased and converted into what is, in effect, a small and very busy motel. Since this past April, the owner has advertised across multiple hosting platforms such as hotels.com for groups of up to sixteen or more, suggesting that it would be a great venue for family reunions, for example. Additionally, he's converted the former two-car garage into a gaming arcade. His advertising has been very successful, as we have experienced several large groups, especially on weekends, with typically as many as five to seven large, like SUV-type vehicles, driving in and out of the property all day and night. All the traffic and noise is exacerbated in our situation because the only way into or out of this property is across an easement which runs the length of the front of our house, which was clearly originally intended for only residential use. The noise levels have been excessive at times, both day and night. For example, we were compelled to call the police on a Friday night in early June because a large group of young men were loudly partying outside the garage arcade until midnight, which only ceased after the arrival of the police. In short, we never know whether or how many renters will show up to party on any given day. In effect, it's no longer the house next door, but rather the motel. Because of the nature of this property, this really does feel like a violation of the zoning ordinance. This is clearly more of a commercial use and not at all residential. I do think it's also important to note that the owner doesn't even live in Ottawa, but rather has his residence elsewhere. I would also like to note that just as prospective new homebuyers to a town will check out whether there is a hospital there and what level of health care is therefore available, so too will people be concerned with whether and what kind of ordinance exists to regulate these short-term rentals, so that their prospective investment in a home would be protected." Okay. Now, as Bob mentioned in his letter, we are not proposing that short-term rentals be completely prohibited, but rather that the number of occupants be limited to a more reasonable number of persons that would occupy a typical family residence, such as six or at most eight people. Similarly, the number of vehicles permitted should be reduced to at least at most three to four. It's clearly in the best interest of Ottawa as a town and community to carefully and thoroughly regulate these short-term rentals. Again, I thank you for your time. Oh, do you remember? Caton Road.
And just so you know, after receiving Mr. Eschbach's letter, I had to pause myself there in saying that. The, we've already had one meeting with Matt Stafford and the city planner Doug Carroll in regards to looking at our ordinance a little bit closer, restricting different things. Doug was going to be gathering some information, and Matt was putting together template letters as a, they're both working together but on separate issues, try to look at putting a little bit more restrictions in the ordinance, while also not completely eliminate it from, because your case is extreme, but there's a lot of other cases in neighborhoods where it's not, you know, where there'd be a problem by over-restricting it.
I can understand that.
So we're trying to find, we're trying to find where that is.
I guess my biggest concern is that, you know, this is a large house, he advertises there's like five bedrooms, it's added a bathroom, it's got six bathrooms. You know, anybody who's got that kind of property next door and they're advertising for sixteen, and basically it says sixteen plus, you know, you all come, you're going to have a great time. This is, he's saying it's a party house without saying that, just by the sheer number. I think you're inviting the kind of situation where, you know, you are going to have a lot of neighborhood nuisance. I think we've actually been lucky that on a lot of the weekends when we have had a lot of people there, this summer, we had a lot of rain on different weekends, or it was excessively hot, so they were mostly indoor. But, you know, originally, and by the way, we also had to install fencing, because it's like fifteen feet away from our property line. Before that, it was really, people are out in the backyard, they're talking, they're laughing. I mean, I'm not saying people are even necessarily throwing loud parties, but when you have that number of people, the level of noise is such that it's just difficult to even sleep. So it's no longer, you really do feel like you're next to a motel. And that's why I think it would be more than fair to restrict the number of people that can be in what is essentially a residential neighborhood.
When we were looking at that property in particular, we agreed that it was excessive in the way that they were advertising it and the accommodations that they were advertising.
Touting, yes.
So we have been looking at it, we're about to kind of regather. Doug and Matt were looking at getting it put together, and then, of course, we'll say something to the public, but we'll also respond to Mr. Eschbach's letter as well. But thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
You know, I've stayed in several VRBOs and Airbnbs, and all of them that I've stayed in have individual rules. I just wonder if that's something that's mandated by the jurisdiction that they're in, that they have these rules. And I support Airbnbs and VRBOs, however, they should not be disruptive to the community that they're in. And I think we could maybe mandate rules that are enforceable, I'm not sure, that's something Christina could look at, but they all had rules, you know, that ten o'clock you had to be quiet, you couldn't have parties, and so on and so forth, you know.
Yeah, and when we were first putting the ordinance together, my family typically stays, Airbnbs and those kinds of places, and my mindset was, well, they're going to be respectful, they're going to be, you know, good neighbors, all this kind of stuff, because that's how you get the good reviews, that's how you get more people to stay there. Adam Clark, our ordinance officer, was in those meetings, and he immediately started giving us addresses of Airbnbs that were not in good standing, and weren't pulling their trash back, and were not cutting the grass. So it did make us have to immediately go, okay, we need to actually look at this from the worst-case scenario.
Well, and I think that, anecdotally, I know New York is no comparison, but they've completely outlawed Airbnbs. They may still be there, but at least if you're next one, you have recourse to report them, get them shut down. So that's the whole point, that's what we hear, is an ordinance that gives adjacent property owners the right to complain and to make, you know, to desist, for instance, having to be a party house.
And the ordinance doesn't go into place till January, so we have time to make adjustments to it. And, because we're also looking at how to properly enforce parts of it as well, so we are looking at it.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to appear before the council?
Good evening, my name is Mike Crowley. I live next to, my wife and I, Barb, live next to Jim and Liz, and I mainly came up to concur with what Liz said. And one thing that comes to mind with me, this thing should be zoned as a business. And if it's zoned as a business, he's in violation of the zoning ordinance. It should really be that simple. This guy doesn't live there, he spends no time there, he's running a business. So I just want to put that in front of you, to take that into consideration. Then, if you want a B&amp;B and you want to put a business in a neighborhood, then you need to have a variance, and you need to let your neighbors come in and tell why they agree or disagree. And as it stands, this guy swooped in in the middle of the night and is running a business right next to us. So thank you for your time.
Is anyone else? If you could go up to the microphone. And we know who we are, but yes.
I'm Jim Ferrero. I used to be here dealing with liquor licenses, but this is a lot different. But, you know, we're along Caton Road, but to get up to the three houses in Danny's house, there is an easement, a road that was put in at least eighty years ago to go up to where the easements are. And with all the traffic, it's taking a toll on our roads, too. So, I mean, it's, it's rather interesting and complicated situation, and you're all welcome to come and look, and see what we're talking about, and see the beautiful fences that we put up, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then, moving forward.
All right. Yeah, we're going to have the public hearing on the annexation agreements for the three properties in Oak Terrace. Christina, do you?
Oh, sorry, I was flipping back to my screen.
Yes, sir.
These are the Oak Terrace properties, and under the same terms and conditions that we've annexed other properties in the past, we have gone ahead and published for this public hearing today. And, you know, the property owners have all agreed to this. I don't think there's anything, Commissioner Baron, that's different from what we've done traditionally in the past on these.
Not on these.
So, so the hearing is for, if anybody from the public wants to comment on any three of the annexation agreements, we will hear your comments now. And if not, then you want to declare it closed at 7:15?
We will. Can I get a motion to close it at 7:15?
So moved.
Baron, roll call.
You don't have to do that.
Right, now, let's go right on to Commissioner Michael Kraut's report.
All right. Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that the bi-weekly salary payroll of August 16th, 2024, in the amount of $632,492.82, be approved and warrants issued.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that the bi-monthly expense report dated August 20th, 2024, showing expenses in the amount of $1,596,631.64, be approved and warrants issued.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Baron, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that the monthly financial report of city clerk Shelley L. Monks for the month of July, 2024, be received and placed on file.
I get a second. Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement between the City of Ottawa and SRF Consulting Group, Incorporated, for NCAT's strategic plan, which has been on file for public inspection since August 6th, 2024, be adopted.
I get a second.
Second.
I just was done with a grant that we have received, so it's state money that we're using, so.
Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that a resolution authorizing the execution of two employment agreements for city officials, and Glenn Pratt as part-time bus operator and part-time facilities assistant, and Brendan Fuse as part-time facilities assistant for NCAT, which has been on file for public inspection since August 6th, 2024, be adopted.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Baron.
These are people that we're hiring to take care of cleaning the buses and sterilizing the buses when we're done with them at night.
Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. We're lining out number six under Wayne's agenda, it's not ready yet with the county, so we'll go on to the next one. Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that a resolution authorizing the execution and amendment to the downstate operating assistance grant agreement for NCAT be received and placed on file for public inspection.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainer.
This is one of the places that we receive our money to keep NCAT going.
Roll call.
Along with the next one.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that a resolution authorizing the execution of the section, oh, I came and talked, section 5311 grant agreement between the City of Ottawa and IDOT for NCAT be received and placed on file for public inspection.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Same thing.
Eichel Kraut, he just said money.
Money. Money, got it.
Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that a resolution authorizing the execution of a performance contract between the City of Ottawa and the Jesse White tumbling team for the Fall Festival Parade be received and placed on file for public inspection.
Can I get a second?
Second. They did such a great job last year, and it was so much fun, and it was, they were great. So we're bringing them back, I think Fall Festival Parade is going to be excellent. So come and enjoy.
Put the horses behind them this time.
Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor.
Aye, and, I'm sorry, can we be also in front of the horses?
Basically, I'm lining everybody up, so you got a good chance of being where you want to be.
All right, very good.
Moved by Commissioner Eichel Kraut that a resolution authorizing the execution of a community solar bill credit purchase agreement between the City of Ottawa and Engie Distributed Renewables Development LLC be received and placed on file for public inspection.
I get a second.
Second.
Gainer.
You want to explain this one?
So, okay, this is a contract agreement with a solar, essentially a solar farm downstate, that with us being buy-ins with no commitment, once it goes online and starts producing electricity, it gives us an opportunity to purchase some of that electricity at a lower cost.
Basically, it's 10% off of our electricity for, like, our water department, wastewater department, city hall, all the public buildings that we do have, we'll be able to get 10% off when they go online. And it's a 20-year deal, options to get out if you want, and if you just want to stay in and not use it, you can do that, too. So there's, you know, it's just something that can help us save money, that's what we're looking for. And we're always looking for something like this, we're always looking for different things to save money if possible, when it comes down to electricity and stuff like that. We haven't found anything for home use right now like we had before. It seems like there's not that much out there right now, but if there is in the future, we will be bringing it to you. But don't just go buying it from somebody that comes to your door, okay? If the city's going to, city gets involved in this, we search it, we make sure, and we make sure that it's going to work before anything goes out, and it comes from us. So I just want to bring that part up there, because a lot of these people even come to my house, and I ask them if they got a permit, and that's when they leave real quick, so it's just the idea that, a chance for us to save some money for the city.
It's a credit, correct?
Yes.
And, just to clarify, it's applicable only on city properties. It's not a program that's available to the general public, it's just available to city-owned properties that are listed in the agreement.
And we're one of the first to have signed on, so if no one else does, it also, hopefully others will sign on to it as well, and we'll save a little bit of money. Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Just want to tell everybody, we've been averaging between 600 and 800 people at music in the park. This weekend comes silhouettes, so come on down and enjoy and have a good time. Food truck there, I think this week is Bertha's food truck, so just come on down and have a great time.
Very good, thank you.
I feel like a commercial.
You've been saying it every week for months, you're getting it down. On to Commissioner Gainer's report.
Moved by Commissioner Gainer that a resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Ottawa and the Illinois Department of Health Care and Family Services regarding 2025 supplement ambulance rates, which has been on file for public inspection since August 6th, 2024, be adopted.
I get a second. Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor.
Anything you'd like to add?
Nothing tonight.
On to Commissioner Pearson's report.
Moved by Commissioner Pearson that a resolution authorizing the execution of two maintenance agreements between the City of Ottawa and Altor for Power Systems for generators for the Police and Fire Station and the North Water Tower, which has been on file for public inspection since August 6th, 2024, be adopted.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Pearson that a resolution authorizing the execution of a jurisdictional transfer agreement between the City of Ottawa and LaSalle County, which conveys Etna Road from Route 23 to Champlain Street to the city, which has been on file for public inspection since August 6th, 2024, be adopted.
I get a second.
Okay.
Eichel Kraut, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor.
Anything that you'd like to add?
On this Thursday at 10:00 AM, the postponed ribbon cutting for the first City of Ottawa Dog Park, location at 401 East Lafayette, will, say, the 22nd, so.
I'd like to say something, too, Marla. I was up at Peck Park this weekend, and I went down to Allen Park, I'm telling you what, it is, it's great, it's turning into something you could never dream of. I think it's excellent.
Ditto on that, as I texted you, I was walking the dogs in Allen Park, and if we can get the geese out of there, it's going to be real nice. Thank you. On to Commissioner Baron's report.
Moved by Commissioner Baron that a resolution authorizing the execution of a proposal for engineering services by BP Miller Consultants, Limited, for fall protection equipment at the Illinois River Lift Station be received and placed on file for public inspection.
I get a second. Commissioner Pearson.
Yeah, this is, this one and the next one have to deal with our new river crossing. The first one's an engineering study to install a fall protection system down there because of the deep wall. And then the second one is actually the part of the construction that has to happen in that building, I meant, to put it in, so it's needed.
Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Baron that a resolution authorizing the execution of a proposal for materials fabrication and installation by Corsetti Structural Steel, Incorporated, for fall protection equipment at the Illinois River Lift Station be received and placed on file for public inspection.
I get a second. Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Commissioner Baron that a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services between the City of Ottawa and Fair Graham for well number 10's water discharge, discharge study, I cannot talk today, discharge study be received and placed on file for public inspection.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
This has to do with well 10. The EPA is requiring a mixing study for the discharge from well 10, as they discharge the water from the reverse osmosis into the river, so, straight up.
Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor.
Anything you'd like to add, Commissioner Baron?
I got my whole water department working down the street.
You're lighting up the neighborhood.
Yeah, the, it just points out the aging infrastructure in town, and this happens from time to time, and we try to respond to them as quick as we can. And that one happened at 3:30, and I think we're, we were down there a little after four, so.
Well, hopefully it'll get filed.
Hopefully they're done before the end of this meeting.
All right, on to my report.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that an ordinance amending section 10-54 of the municipal code of the City of Ottawa, LaSalle County, Illinois, regarding the liquor code and escalating penalties be passed and approved.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Baron, we are still working at a larger overhaul of liquor licensing. This is slightly different from that in looking at how the liquor commissioner responds to violations, whether it's a ticket or suspension. I just felt that it needed to be tightened up a little bit more to give not only a path for whoever's having to make the decision, but also for anyone who's holding that license to have some idea as what they can, what they could expect if they were to be in violation, and how that would escalate. We did leave it in there that it's up to the discretion of the mayor to escalate those if need be, the example being if someplace that holds a license decided to have a Hell's Angel rally and a couple people die, well, we can suspend their license and not just give them a ticket. If, but at the same time, when you have someone who is, I just feel that it also allows for there to be more fairness with the ordinance, so that when, that you don't have any business that thinks that you're giving preferential treatment from one to the other based on how you administer a fine or issue more tickets or anything like that. So I just thought tightening it up would make it a little bit easier for everybody involved moving forward. Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of an access-to-property-and-tree-removal agreement between the City of Ottawa and SPL Management LLC for 621 Chapel Street, which has been on file for public inspection since August 6th, 2024, be adopted.
I get a second. Commissioner Pearson, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of three annexation agreements between the City of Ottawa and various property owners located at 3, 4, and 5 Oak Terrace Drive, which have been on file for public inspection since August 6th, 2024, be adopted.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Baron, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. We're also passing on number four under the mayor's agenda, move on to the next one.
I can just say, the only reason that we're pushing it off one is we want to check with the planners for the riverfront, because one of the stations is really close to that area, and we just want to make sure that by signing a lease with this company that's going to be putting these stations in, that in two years, we're not having to try to break that lease. So we're just really looking at the plan to make sure that it won't, we don't think it will, but we thought taking a two-week breather on it would be the prudent thing to do, so.
Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Ottawa, Craig Godwin, and Barbara Godwin, for property located at 2223 Caton Road be received and placed on file for public inspection. Be approved, a move to public hearing be set for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in council chambers on this set agreement.
I get a second.
Second.
Commissioner Baron, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution appointing Heather Persley, term to expire September 19, 2026, to the Arts Committee be adopted.
I get a second. Commissioner Pearson, she is replacing Ryan Witherspoon, who had to step down because of other conflicts with when they were meeting. I think Heather's going to do a great job, anyone who has anything to do with our community knows that Heather has a hand in it, I said to that committee. Roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution accepting a big and authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale contract between the City of Ottawa and Ryan Companies, U.S., Incorporated, for property located at Route 6, Tech Technology Drive be received and placed on file for public inspection.
I get a second. Commissioner Gainer, roll call.
Eichel Kraut, Gainer, Pearson, Baron, Mayor. Moved by Mayor Hasty that a resolution reappointing Rich Crum, Mike Doherty, J.A. Eichel Kraut, Candy Moore, Jim Riley, Dan Elts, Lucas Hennefent, and Robin Wilson, and appointing Randy Paquette, Audrey Miller, and Ron Lampert, all terms to expire September 1st, 2026, to the Special Events Committee be adopted.
I get a second.